The December 1st meeting. We'll note that Commissioner Decker is absent. All other commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the order of business? There are no changes to the order of business. Would there be a motion to approve the order of business as printed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not?
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have the motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. First item we have, there's a liquor license transfer and Mr. Coling will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This resolution before you is for the transfer of a liquor license. This license is currently held by Scott Wax doing business at Frontier Liquor. Mr. Wax has filed an application to transfer the on off sale license to Frontier Liquor LLC. Transfer appears to be in ordinance and in compliance with city's requirements and city's staff recommend approval of this transfer. Our city code and fee schedule does include a transfer fee which is equivalent to a one year's, the one year amount of an on off sale license. However, in these cases where an individual is transferring the license to an LLC or another corporate entity without any change of management, we have in the past waived that transfer fee and city's staff would recommend waiver of that transfer fee in this situation as well. There is a resolution in your packet. It would be Resolution 71-2014.
Mr. Coling, does the resolution as it's written waive the fee then?
Yes, it does.
You've heard his introduction, recommendation. Are there any comments or questions?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve the resolution in the second. Any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Go to item B. This is the McAuliffe Kellogg Municipal Prosecution Contract and Mr. Coling will introduce this item also.
Mr. President and Commissioners, this is a municipal prosecution contract with McAuliffe Kellogg Law Firm. At the last meeting, the City Commission accepted the response to the request for proposal from McAuliffe Kellogg to be our municipal prosecutor and this agreement would formalize that appointment, would begin on January 1st of next year and would be a flat monthly rate of $12,500 as stated in McAuliffe Kellogg's response to the request for proposals. City staff would recommend approval of the contract and entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction, recommendation, comments or questions? Not, is there a motion regarding the contract?
I'll move, we approve the contract.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Go to item C. This is to consider a proposal by Brady Martz for some accounting services and City Administrator Kessel will introduce it further.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. I've been working with John Mojon from Brady Martz to discuss our immediate needs for staff in the financial department. It's resulted in the agreement that is attached for you, attached to your agenda for this evening's consideration. As you all know, we've been working without a primary financial person for an extended period of time. The accounting staff has done an admirable job in picking up extra duties, but they are overwhelmed. The city's financial complexity has expanded tremendously in the past 36 months and the City Commission approved a deputy city administrator for finance administrative services in recognition of these growing needs. We have attempted to fill that position on two different occasions and are currently working with a candidate I hope to be able to announce in the near term. In addition to the approval of the deputy position, an accounting manager position was also approved. We had attempted to fill that position. We had over 18 applicants, but none met our minimum qualifications. We are working with the candidate who most closely met our requirements to see if we can find a point of common ground. I am happy to announce that we have hired an accounting intern from DSU who will start in January. She comes with experience in accounts payable and accounts receivable and we expect that she'll be working in a similar capacity here. I'm confident with some training that she'll be able to relieve current staff from their existing workload. And due to the difficulty in filling the accounting manager and deputy positions, I would propose that we engage Brady Martz in a short-term contract, my hope is six months or less, at least initially, to fulfill our accounting and finance needs. These services would be provided by Andrew Sikora and Tim Paulson primarily and their resumes were included in your packets. These staff members would be embedded similar to KLJ's staff is now and it is my recommendation that we approve the enclosed contract. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. I don't think, at least in my electronic notebook here, that we have a attached contract or attached proposal. We have the resumes.
I do apologize if you didn't get a copy of that. I could make the copies and distribute.
What is the monthly fee on this one proposed?
The, it's a fee that would be an hourly fee depending upon the staff members themselves. If there's a CFO, a shareholder and associate level, Mr. Mojon, the one that I primarily spoke to is a shareholder, but the primary, the two people that I mentioned would be at the associate level and provide services at 80 to 110 dollars an hour. The expectation is that they would each work two to three days a week and during the term of the contract. I expect that initially we'll need both, but come February, I think our needs will lessen so that we'll probably need just one. They would also help in, these are the two people that have been proposed by Brady Martz are their specialists in public accounting, so they have experience in that area and I would also, or have talked with Mr. Mojon about them assisting with training needs that we would have with either the accounting manager or the deputy positions.
Will they make a recommendation at the end of their tenure regarding city financial software?
Yes, sorry, I didn't cover that, but yes. They also have, of course, as their public sector accountants have also had a lot of experience with accounting software. We are currently looking at budgeting software specifically. We had another presentation today with that regard, but yes, we, our intention would also be to ask them for a recommendation with regard to accounting software.
Other comments or questions?
You're recommending a three, six month?
I'm recommending six months.
Six month?
Yeah.
But it could be shorter depending upon whether or not you're successful with some of these applicants we have for the two senior positions in the finance department.
That's exactly correct. It would be my hope that we could do this in as little as three months, but I recognize that we have, we have some work to catch up on and it'll depend upon our ability to close on the other two positions as President Johnson just mentioned.
Can these, either one of these two gentlemen start almost immediately?
Yes, both of them would be able to start almost immediately.
Yeah, because we've got, with it being December 1st, we have to be ready for our audit, have to be able to close this year and I suspect there's work to be done there.
On the agenda later this evening, we're going to ask for the budget amendment special meeting and that was, be their primary role, at least initially, is to become prepared for that, also to prepare the budget book, not the coalition or the compilation of it, but simply the gathering of information and we will have it produced offsite as we have done traditionally.
And their contract, it states that they will have limited availability from January 15th through April 15th through the taxes and how do you expect to work through that?
The, the hope is that we will, the primary concern for me, at least initially, is to get through to January 1st. Their primary responsibilities will be this month in getting us prepared for those budget adjustments for the end of the year. Once January hits, I think we'll be able to transition to a less of a workload, hopefully maybe even only one of those individuals, but we recognize and I'm glad you noticed that and pointed it out, that they do have existing clients that they'll have to service. So our limits, limits their ability to provide services to us.
Okay. So it really is a short-term contract. Our initial cost is going to be in this upcoming 45 days and then we hope to transition out of it.
That's exactly correct. Yep, yeah.
But I think we have to recognize if we're not successful in recruiting to these two positions, you may have a longer tenure.
Right. I may be coming, hopefully not, but I may be coming and asking for renewal as long as their services are up to par and we are still in need.
Other comments or questions?
I, I think we have to proceed. I'm not sure we really have a choice. I think we've all recognized, especially in recent months, that we're probably neglecting some things that we, that we wouldn't be and we need to do this. Mr. President, I move we approve the contract.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the October financial report which is enclosed in your electronic notebooks. Mr. Kessel, is there anything you'd like to say about it?
President Johnson, as you can see, the, there's still some large balances that we would like to, that we will be taking care of by the end of the month, some transfers and such, but overall, those are the biggest concerns that we have is to make sure that we get the, what I'll call cleanup done by the end of the year. But other than that, the report is, is there for your review and I would take any questions that you have.
Clear. Any questions for Mr. Kessel?
No questions. It's, it's good to see that sales tax and some of the other taxes are staying strong, surprisingly strong to me.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else wish to comment?
I'll make the motion to approve the financial report.
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Mr. Kessel, I, I do have one, I guess, comment and possibly a question, but it, it just looks to me like what we receive each month in the oil impact funds is less than we thought it would be. And so what, what I'm wondering about is, well, you know, I could be wrong here and my expectations were too high, but are there funds that, that come to us as oil impact funds that aren't hitting the schedule that say are directly going into a construction account?
President Johnson, yes, that is the case. We also have some grant funds. I'll point out the State Water Commission grant funds of 18.4 million. We also have $7 million in oil impact grant dollars that we have not yet billed for. So there's $25 million in grant dollars that we have not been reimbursed, well, we haven't incurred all the expenses to be reimbursed yet.
Okay, so we haven't requested those payments?
Correct.
When we get, when we receive those, those will be recorded in the schedule?
That, that's correct.
Okay, well, those are some big dollars and...
Yes, they are.
And they're likely to not be received in this fiscal year then?
We...
With only 30 days left.
I don't anticipate that we'll get those reimbursements complete until the end of next week, so I would expect those will happen in 2015, early 2015.
All right. Thank you. I think we did have a second on that. So is there any other discussion regarding the financial report? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That takes us to the city administrator reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. I do want to spend some time talking about the Crooked Crane Trail. We did make a application, and when I say we, I've been working with James Kramer from the Park District and also Representative Steiner and then another representative from DSU or the Friends of the Crooked Crane Trail, Ms. Suzanne Ross. We have engaged KLJ to assist us with the presentation of the Crooked Crane Trail in terms of mapping and such and it's now resulted in a outdoor heritage fund grant application. I believe you have a copy of that included in your reports this evening. That grant application summarizes what the improvements would be that we proposed to make. This Crooked Crane Trail would be a multi-phase improvements that essentially surround the Patterson Lake. It would create a connection between existing city park, or excuse me, city trails with Patterson Lake and then provide a maintained trail around. Parts of that trail would be hard surface so that it would include a 10-foot path to, of asphalt or a concrete nature so that people on rollerblades or bikes or pushing strollers, anybody who is so inclined could, could use that trail. It would also include a fitness portion of about 1.8, the first 1.8 miles would have a fitness loop that would include about three clusters of equipment in that loop so that you could use that for strength training and flexibility enhancement as you're, you're utilizing the, the trail itself. And kind of unique to, to this trail would be a component for younger children. So as, as you're out as a parent, you can bring your child with you, you can walk that fitness trail, you could stop at these clusters and your kids will have something that they can do while you're performing the exercises as well. So we're trying to make it as, as family friendly as possible and it would also play upon the existing services like the 18-plus hole disc golf course that's out there, the public restrooms and so on. Phase two would include a more natural trail located on the, primarily the southern side of the lake. This is the, provides the most distance. It's about a 17-mile trail in, in total and the most of that distance is on the south side of the lake. It would include several loops so that you could choose your fitness level, if you wanted to go out for a mile, or if you wanted to go out for five miles, or if you wanted to do the whole 17, you certainly could. And for people as, as healthy as Mr. Coling, you can do it twice if you wanted to. So it would be totally up to you how much you'd want to use it. We anticipate that we'll have a second and even a third grant from the outdoor heritage fund to fund those upgrades as well. So initially, it's about a $1.3 million cost. We're requesting $975,000 from the outdoor heritage grant. The remaining will be fundraised, both in the budget form that's included in the packet also has the breakdown of how those funds would be, would be created. The City Commission, as you are well aware, has, has put trail funding as an annual commitment and so we'd be using a portion of those dollars. The Park Board has also done the same. They've made a commitment. We'll be approaching the County Park Board and Stark County itself to see if they'd like to participate as well. There have been preliminary discussions with private firms and the response has been rather positive. We've done very little in terms of the fundraising side, but we're already receiving checks, fairly sizable checks to support this effort. So I just wanted to make sure that, that you were aware of this effort. It's a, it's a partnership project. It's a, one that's been out there since 1998 and this would bring the, to fruition, the plan that was created way back when it was first installed. So if there's any questions, I'd like to, to take those now since it's a, it's a pretty unique and project and I think it lends itself well to the other quality of place investments that, that we've made over the course of time.
Mr. President, I have a couple...
Mr. Kessel, there was a small section out there that had a trail on it a few years
back and so on and it's ultimately destroyed by the ATVs and so on. So that was a costly project. How do we plan on taking care of the, that off-road problem and number two, who's going to enforce it, county, sheriff or city?
Those are excellent questions, Commissioner Steiner, and there's been upgrades to the fencing and such already. The intent is to not have any off-road vehicles of any kind participate in, in the Crooked Crane Trail. This is meant to be a fitness walking trail, not for motorized vehicles at all. So my understanding is they've done a pretty good job of, of changing the access points so that motorized vehicles can't access. I don't know that it's complete, but the Park Board has been the one who enforces that now. All of the land is on Bureau, is owned by the Bureau of Reclamation who, of course, is another partner. They're, they're excited about the trail itself and they've given us authority to make these improvements and to limit access in, in the way that it sounds like would be amenable to, to you, Mr. Steiner and of course to, to us. The Park Board itself would do the maintenance of the trail, so the city would not be involved in, in the maintenance portion. We would only be involved in the creation. It's currently not within our city limits. The Crooked Crane Trail in Patterson Lake is, is outside of our existing city limits. That may change in the near future, but as of today, they're not in our city limits.
So as far as policing, are we depending on the county?
We do have one mile outside of our city limits that our police can respond to incidences. So that does encompass a portion of the Crooked Crane Trail and the fitness loop itself that is phase one, I believe is incorporated, is included in that first mile, but outside of that, we'd rely more upon the Sheriff's Department to assist with any incidences. And if they would call us in, we'd of course assist in that response.
Because there will be a problem with the ATVs. I mean, you're talking about closing off the access points and so on, but ATVs go around access points. So there will be a policing situation out there. We just, make sure we know who's going to handle it and who clients are going to be in. Hopefully take care of that problem.
Old habits are hard to break.
Yeah, we're going to put a million dollars into this trail.
In the first phase.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other comments or questions?
The next item agenda is a budget, a request to schedule the special meeting for the budget amendments that I spoke about earlier. On your agenda, it puts forth two different dates, those of December 22nd and December 30th. Because we'd like to add a, another agenda item to that list that involves right-of-way acquisition, we'd like to eliminate the request for the February, for the December 22nd meeting and focus more on the December 30th meeting. Hopefully that will work with, with the commission, but we need a time, if, if that day does work for you all, to, to set that meeting. Usually it only lasts an hour or less, so it's not too lengthy.
We would hold our regular meeting on the 22nd.
15th.
15th, oh, that's right, it's two weeks, 15th, okay. But your preference is December 30th?
Yes, it is, just because of the timing of the right-of-way acquisition. We are expecting a report with, involved in that right-of-way acquisition that we won't even receive until December 23rd.
Well, I'm available.
I have no problem if it's after, if it's before noon and after 2:30.
Okay.
Before noon.
Or after 2:30.
Yeah.
So you could do it at 2:30 or?
I could do it at 2:30.
I have a 3 o'clock county planning and zoning meeting. Can you do that?
Yeah, but that day may not be possible for me. If you need to go ahead, you should go ahead, but it's unlikely I would be there.
I've not talked to Commissioner Decker, so I don't know if that day would work for him either.
Is morning a bad time for city staff?
I would defer to Attorney Coling. I will actually be traveling back that day and won't be able to attend, so Attorney Coling's agreed to lead that from a staff perspective.
Mr. President, I believe there's another meeting scheduled in this room in the morning on Tuesday on the 30th. It's possible that that meeting could get moved, but, but that's the conflict for the morning on the 30th.
I just need to be done by 3:00 to get to the next meeting.
Any chance you could start at 2:00, Commissioner Steiner?
Well, there's a chance you guys could start at 2:00 and I'd be a little late.
As long as, you know, Commissioner Decker could be here, we'd have 3:00.
Okay, I'll contact Commissioner Decker.
We'll have a, you know, if it just turns out to be the three of us, we're going to have a problem because one will come late and the other will leave early and...
Mm-hmm. I could be there by 2:30 for sure.
So why don't we set it for 2:30 and let's hope for the best that Commissioner Decker can be here, Commissioner Jackson can't.
Okay.
And maybe we'll have the clerks send a meeting notices tomorrow so it gets on our calendar.
Well, thank you for consideration on that item. The next item then are just some announcements with regard to several boards of recommendation. We, of course, are in constant need of, of interested citizens who, who would like to serve on, on boards that they have an interest. Currently, we have openings on our Board of Adjustments, our Special Assessment Commission, the Dickinson Public Library, our Historic Preservation Commission and our Energy Committee. There's at least one opening in each of those. Some of them have more than one opening, so if there's anybody who is interested in any of those positions, we have a citizen interest form that can be found on our website at www.dickinsongov.com. We'd encourage you to review the, what the, each of those boards does in terms of their duties and if you remain interested, please fill out the form and, and submit it and we'll gladly bring forth a recommendation to the City Commission. My last agenda item is actually not, not listed, but I'm, I'm happy to report, I'm always happy to report when either our projects or city staff or even commissioners get awards like, like Commissioner Jackson received most recently from the League of Cities. I was informed earlier and I don't even think the, the Prayer Business Magazine edition is out yet, so you're getting some privileged information, but Mr. Coling has been selected as one of the 40 Under 40. This is a, an annual publication that, that Prayer Business does and he was nominated and selected as one of those distinct few of 40 Under 40. So congratulations, Attorney Coling, for that honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That concludes my report then.
Did you have some visitors in the audience?
I, I did, but they are distinguished as they are. They would like to remain anonymous at this point, other than I'll say that it's Troop 35 or members of Troop 35 from a local Cub Scouts unit, but they're, they're a little shy right now, I think.
Okay. Well, that's all right, so we're glad you're here working on your merit page. So we're glad you're here, working on your merit badges. So... Okay, well, then it is 5:00, and we have some timetable agenda items. And the first one has to do with an amendment to our comprehensive plan, and we'll have Mr. Kutan introduce this item.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is a future land use map amendment of the 2035 Dickinson Comprehensive Plan from residential to public civic designation. The ultimate purpose of the site is for the new Stark County Fairgrounds. The property is approximately 86 acres and is located at the southeast corner of Highway 22 and 40th Street Southwest. The plan and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you. We have some members of the public that wish to draft it?
I believe we have the applicant here.
Arnie Benning, Stark County Park Board.
My name's Andrew Walsh. I work for AE2S here in town.
I don't know what we need to do.
Are you in favor of the ordinance, Arnie?
Yeah, we definitely are in favor of it. You know, this is the second part. We really didn't have any other problems with the zoning board, other than some question on the access, having two accesses right now. That's basically in the development plan. As we get going, we'll take a look at all that. We've got a lot of dirt to move and, you know, positioning of what we want to put on there. Number one thing, as I said to the zoning board, would be is the movement of the outdoor arena from at the college to this location. And then we'd like to also work with an indoor arena that would tie right with this, and so we're working on plans. There's been a few different things, some ties with the foundation, and that changed, and we're now tied to the, kind of lead group would be the Fair Association, and they're the, you know, they're ones that will, you know, so we're working on a plan. We've got a meeting this Wednesday to put together a plan for the location of that, how it's going to be located on this property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, just a benefit for the general public. This is a two-pronged process. The first process is what we're talking about tonight is the comprehensive plan amendment that would allow them to move forward with a PUD for the rezoning that you're describing, that the developer was describing earlier. That will come after this fact. That will address the land use and the building and the development, the specific development requirements. But tonight, we're just talking about the comprehensive plan to allow it, to allow the proper designation for it to move forward with the rezoning for the PUD.
Yeah, as I read the ordinance, it effectively, or I guess it's changing the land use designation from agricultural to civic.
That's correct, from residential to civic, yes.
Or residential, yeah.
Yes. In order to do a, essentially in order to do the Stark County Fairgrounds, they would have to change the designation from residential to public civic in order for them to move forward. And that's what we're hearing tonight.
Is there anything else the gentlemen would like to add?
Unless you have any questions for us.
Okay, are there questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coling, this is ordinance 1568.
Mr. President, yes, ordinance 1568.
Okay, and so I'll ask at this time, is there anyone else from the general public that would like to comment on ordinance 1568? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody else from the public? If no one else from the public wishes to comment, are there other comments by city staff or commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding this ordinance?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
1568.
We have the motion to approve, and the second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We've got a few minutes before our next timetable item, so we'll jump down to public works. Mr. Zurov, you have a bid that you're bringing to the Commission?
President Johnson, Commissioner, yes, I do. I gave you a sheet right before council regarding the bid opening of the 2015 refuse truck. A couple of things, I didn't have them, I apologize for not having this before the memo was completed, before this Commission meeting, but we needed to get it on the agenda, and so you have it before you. A couple of things with this bid opening. The 2015 front-load refuse truck was budgeted for the 2015 budget. We did bid it early because of one of the trucks, the front-load trucks was wrecked at the landfill. So with one of the trucks wrecked, we went ahead and bid the front-load refuse collection truck, and you have the bids, total of the bids received that I gave you earlier. Aaron Prowse, our salvage managers here too, if you have any questions, and he might want to come up and explain some things if you have any other additional questions. But with that, going through the bids, we did look at a couple of the bids. One is the 2013 we threw out because it didn't meet the specifications. The two 2015 trucks, one is for $216,000, nine sixty, the other's for $237,500. We recommend the $237,500 because of the delivery time and the need for that front-load truck. And I guess I'd like to have any discussion you might have with this. It's fairly well explained in the letter.
Is there any salvage from the other truck?
I believe there will be. I don't know the dollar amounts. Usually, you know, be a scrap salvage. The truck was totaled, I believe, and so there'd be...
What happened to the truck?
As they're out at the landfill, you have to lift it and inject the refuse, and that was on uneven ground, and it tipped over and totaled the vehicle.
What year was the one that...
I might have to ask Mr. Prowse if that was the, what year that was.
Good evening. What was the question, Mr. Steiner?
What year was the truck that tipped?
That was a 2003 Volvo. It was the oldest one in our fleet of this make. What happened, as Gary said, it was on unlevel surfaces out at the landfill. That was a tip-up design, so as the hoist was raising, the trash was compacted in there. A lot of tonnage was hanging up on the hopper or in the box, and that's what caused it to come over. The truck was not in full tilt when it actually went over. It was about three-quarters of the way up. The operator did notice it was starting to lean, so he started bringing the hoist down, and it still went over center and tipped on its side.
Is there any...
There are other issues that we were having with that truck. It was scheduled for a 2015 replacement. However, this is kind of just all adding together now.
Is there an insurance claim filed looking for that?
The insurance claim is filed. The adjuster actually has been out to look at the truck. Brett and I did meet with the adjuster. We are looking at a total loss on it. He was going back to his office to do some more claims work on it as well.
So whatever comes from the insurance will be applied to this?
That would be applied to this truck.
The, how assured are you that the estimated delivery time of within two months is accurate?
The company that bid that truck, I talked to them on the phone. The assembly line has two slots open for this company. It's just a matter of throwing in the product that we want and to build it to our spec. So he had the spots available. It was a matter of just getting our truck into the position.
Because we wouldn't want to pay the higher price and then turn out that it delivers, you know, three, four, five months down the road as opposed to within...
Yes, I agree with you there.
And that was one thing on our bid, we did not specify delivery date. I guess that's why we're bringing this before the Commission, too.
If the accident went to happen at the landfill, things would be a little different story as we speak right now. We probably would be going with the middle of the three estimates, which would be that 2015 chassis. The 2013 chassis obviously is two years old. There were numerous areas where that truck did not meet spec.
But also, the 2015 doesn't have the rearview camera. There are some...
It does not have a rearview camera or a hopper camera. We'd have to go through and get a price estimate on that as to what it would cost to add to that truck. Those two cameras are a necessity for safety precautions, operating on the city streets, as well as watching the blade in the truck.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of the recommended vehicle.
So the motion is to accept Management's recommendation. Is there a second?
A second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner.
I didn't forget you, Mr. Kubis. We'll come back to you, okay? So we've got a 510 timetable agenda item, and this has to do with the telecommunications tower, and Mr. Kutan will also introduce this item.
Mr. President, this is a special use permit from Buell Consulting to erect a 149-foot telecommunication tower situated at the northwest corner of 40th Street Southwest and Highway 22. The plan and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the 15 conditions that are attached in your packing materials. It is kind of ironic that we're on the south side and we have two petitions that are catty-cornered to one another.
Okay, so this is Resolution 72. Normally, we don't ask for public input, but I will ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this item. If you'd like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. If there's no one that wishes to comment, any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Make motion to approve.
Sir, we have the motion and the second to approve Resolution 72. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a little time before the 530 timetable agenda items, so we'll go to engineering. And Mr. Kubis, do you have some project updates?
President Johnson, Commissioner, I do have a few updates. As our winter shutdown of November 19th has passed, we have wound down most of the construction in town. Have just a few updates of work that's still ongoing. First and foremost, we have our 40th Street Water and Sewer Project. We bid that late, and they're getting very close right now. I would say they're within 100 feet of having sewer service to the property that was unserved by city services. Have about 250 feet of water service to finish up, to have them fully connected. So right now, the pace is slow. They're working in 40th Street right now. But if the weather holds, and it looks like it will, according to the long-range forecast, I would say in the next two to three weeks, we'll have that project not completed, but completed to a point where all properties that need city services will have them this year. We'll probably at that point wind the project down and resume early in the spring. So it's been tough weather. We were hoping for a little milder November, but they're plugging away. They were even working today, so hopefully with the 30 degrees in the forecast for later this week, we'll get where we need to be on 40th Street. Other than that, we have some cleanup work on some of our other water projects on the West Business Loop, the project that's on East Velar, the water project, excuse me, on East Broadway. They are doing some digging on that project. They're outside of the right-of-way in a water easement. But for all intents and purposes, we've wrapped up construction on our city CIP project. So it was a busy year. It was tough going at times, and we have some carryover work next year, but we got a chunk of work done this year, so it was good. If there's any specific questions on any of the projects or anything else engineering-related, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions for the city engineer or...
Mr. Kubis, just one question. The State Avenue South safety rail we were going to put in, where, is that going to get done this winter?
It did, yeah.
It's completed.
It is?
Yes.
What'd you end up putting there?
Well, we put up some three-cable guard rail, and the landscape planting didn't all get planted this fall. We had got some of the landscaping done as far as tree planting earlier in the year, even before the Fourth of July. Some of that didn't get planted. They'll come in and fill in the rest of that next spring or summer with the trees and shrubs, but the, it was three-cable guard rail is what ended up getting installed there, so...
Thank you. Haven't been down there in a while, so I didn't...
Neither have I.
Any other questions?
I'm still interested in seeing the schedule of bid opening dates for our 2015 projects. I expect after, maybe after our meeting on the 15th. Be better able to do that, maybe?
We will. I don't know that we have an exact date for the upcoming projects. Some of them, I know that Mr. Zurov's been working with on the sewer end, are very close to bidding. Just today, we were discussing a project that's grown on us a little bit. It's a lift station project with gravity mains, force mains, and an intersection improvement that we're going to, I guess, explore the options of a construction management at-risk contract for that, since it has so many different aspects of the project. It's not just a transportation project or a sewer project, so we're going to explore that. But I would say we have at least two, maybe three sewer projects that are getting ready to bid in the next couple of months, and some street projects that, I guess, we'll have right-of-way updates at the meeting at the end of the month. And pending those, I would say, you know, by February, March at the latest, we'll be ready to bid those, so...
The Lift Station 14 project is about ready to bid, but we are adding on to that. And the West Gravity Phase Two is, the design's finished, we're just waiting for the last right-of-way on the state land, and that will be bid soon.
Which is 14, Gary?
Lift Station 14. That's the one on the corner of 21st and 10th Avenue East. That's where we added a roundabout. We're looking at the extension of the sewer main towards the Woodhaven project.
Mr. Zurov, you might as well go right into your project updates.
I don't have much for project updates. Mr. Kubis, you know, pretty much said it all. One of the things I did want to bring up on our water reclamation facility, we are next week starting 24/7 in operation, so that'll be full go-ahead next week on 24/7 operations. We have to use it 24/7 till all the SCADA is hooked up, so it'll be probably till January, a good month or so, we will go 24/7 at the wastewater plant. Also this week, there's a professor that helps us with the process control. He will be coming this week, and the lab will be set up and processed. So there's still a lot of things going on at the plant.
The SCADA will be done when?
Probably in a month. Right now, we need to go 24/7, so as that gets going, not all the bugs out of the SCADA are done, so we'll, the plant will be manned until all the bugs are worked out and all the SCADA and all the controls are running properly.
Well, Commissioner Steiner and I took a curve two weeks ago... Well, Commissioner Steiner and I took a curve, uh, two weeks ago, and he can comment for himself, but I think, uh, we were both very much impressed with, uh, you know, the Influent Pumping Station and the Water Reclamation Facility. Looks like it's very much state-of-the-art.
It is. Uh, it, uh, the, the project is, and I, I believe I've said it a couple of times, probably too often, that, you know, the, uh, that, that project, uh, was awarded the North Dakota American Public Works Association Project of the Year, and it was submitted for, uh, one of our, one of the magazines, Water and Wastewater Digest, uh, to be on the top 10 project for small communities. But it's a, a very good project.
President Johnson, that last magazine you mentioned, that's nationally, so, uh, it's a pretty big honor.
Anything else here on these projects? Well, we have, uh, one more item, that's the homeless shelter update. That's not scheduled till 5:30. That's about 10 minutes away. Do you, is there anything else you want to do?
Mr. President, uh, I just have a quick announcement. Just wanted to let the commission know that I've accepted a position, uh, City of Etamwa in Iowa. I've been searching for, uh, about a month or so. My family and I have, uh, wanted to return back to the Midwest to, um, be closer to family and relatives, and my last day here will be the last week of December. I want to thank you for your support, willingness to, uh, put up with me over the last three and a half years, and, uh, I've been very receptive to planning and, and, uh, the different methods and techniques. I have, I have, uh, never enjoyed a job that has been so tough. It's been a, it's been an invigorating, exciting trip. I've enjoyed the job every day. Every day's different. It's unique. Uh, it's exciting to be, uh, part of, um, the city's future and see where the city is going, and to, uh, hopefully contribute and, and a benefit for the community as a whole. I've worked with some great, uh, coworkers, and the management staff here are exceptional. Uh, you do have a very good team here. You should be very proud about that. I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and with that, I have mixed feelings. I'm sad to leave, but I'm happy to go to an area that's closer to my family and relatives. That's where I need to be, and, and my family is, uh, very happy with that as well. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Corton, we're, uh, I think we've been aware that, uh, you have been looking. We're, um, sorry to hear that you found a position. You've done a great job here with us. You've been here at a, a time when it's been, uh, very critical that we have, uh, a good planning director, and we've had that, we've had more than good. You've, uh, done an exceptional job, and, uh, there will be people who live here in the future that, uh, may not know who actually did a lot of the work, but I believe very much so that they will be very appreciative of your efforts and, uh, those of your colleagues here in the city, so. You've been here at a critically important time, and thank you for, for serving that three and a half years.
I've had, uh, the good fortune of working with, with Mr. Corton, both here at City Commission, but also planning and zoning commission, so I've really gotten to see what he's really been up against this last couple of years, and he has been with us at the height of the fire, to say the least. It is the height of the fire, and, uh, we, we will, as, as you said, Mr. Mayor, we will benefit for a long time from what you've done this last couple of years. It's been very, very good, and gonna miss you a lot.
Mr. President, obviously, I agree with what you both have said, and, and I would like to thank Mr. Corton. I, it, it's one of the toughest, toughest jobs I know that you've probably, you're ever gonna have. I hope you had some good learning experience. I, I think you did. I know we did, but, you know, you, you, you've led us. There were some tough decisions you had to make, and, uh, I think all your decisions were made in the best interest of the city, and, and I appreciate that, and I want to wish you and your family good luck.
I would echo that, and I just thank you for sticking to your guns when you needed to. There were some times that we were approached with different developments, different issues, and you've always maintained our 2035 plan and our vision and, um, exceptional job. Just thank you very much for everything that you did.
Thank you very much for the kind comments.
So, Mr. Kessel, what are we going to do?
Well, I've been trying to talk him out of it for quite some time, and I, I haven't been successful, unfortunately, but, uh, um, you know, Mr. Corton was our, our first hire after we, uh, started to experience the boom, um, and I hate to say the boom, the growth, uh, and he was the first hire, the first department head expansion that we've made, and, um, we made a good choice. You were the first planner that I'm aware of, uh, in Dickinson's history, so that's something that you can carry with you wherever you go. Uh, hopefully you'll have positive stories, um, in Etamwa and whatever's next. We are, we are sad to see you go. You, you were an important part of our, our leadership team, our executive team, and the fabric that is, uh, the city of Dickinson, so we'll, we'll have a, a chance to talk even more, but, uh, I really have appreciated Ed's input, um, even on matters that weren't planning-related. We talk about a lot of things at our executive teams and our, our, uh, leadership team, and I ask for input from everyone, and Ed's has always been thoughtful and, uh, and positive, so. But with that, obviously, we have to move on and, and replace, uh, Mr. Corton, and we've been having meetings, uh, with department heads, uh, and others that aren't department heads to talk about, uh, how we go about that process. I would propose that in, in light of the hiring environment within which we, we are, and we've outlined for you earlier today how difficult it is to hire staff, um, at this time, uh, it's really difficult to hire at, at the professional level that Mr. Corton has. It would be my recommendation that we replace the position of Community Development Director with Planning Director. What that would mean is the current Building and Grounds Department, uh, Forestry, uh, would move to Public Works. The Building Department itself would become an independent department led by the building official, who would become a member of the leadership team. We're working on the job descriptions to make this change, uh, effective, as long as the City Commission agrees with this direction. And the reason for the change in title and duties is in recognition of the fact that the pool of applicants for a planning director is expected to be greater than those for a Community Development Director. As a Community Development Director, he, Mr. Corton had several departments that aren't necessarily traditional, uh, in that role, so we'd like to focus more on, on the planning side, uh, and call it a planning director. I've also done some preliminary research as we make a growth plan, uh, for the 40 or 50 or 55, whatever the population number you think, uh, we're gonna be at. Uh, we're, we're trying to put together a growth plan. The department heads have all submitted, um, growth plans, uh, to me, and so we're using those plans for, for future, uh, growth. And, and as I look to other communities in, in the upper Midwest, the planning director position and the organizational flowchart that I'm recommending this evening is more common, uh, than the, than the one that we had. I've also had the, uh, pleasure to hire another, a management intern from DSU. He's a TR scholar by the name of Matthew Purdue. He'll start in January, and one of his tasks will be to coalesce the department head's existing growth plans to continue the research that I've mentioned to you about other communities that are already at that, uh, population between 40,000 and 50,000, and help to develop a transition plan from today's staffing levels to tomorrow's staffing levels, with the added caveat that we have to make sure that we have funding streams to support those growth as they happen from year to year. I will bring to you an, an organizational flowchart at our next commission meeting so you can see what this looked like visually, and I've been in contact with some private firms to solicit their thoughts and capabilities in the event that we would temporarily require planning services. Planning services are much more difficult for, um, for these firms. There simply aren't as many planners as there are engineers, uh, at this time. I would like to mention that, uh, we have, by the way, started the, the hiring process, um, understanding that the, the title may change. And Mr. Corton has graciously agreed to retain a consulting role during our transition, uh, and during our hiring process. So I'd expect that we would have, and I've talked to Attorney Coling, that we would have a, a contract for Mr. Corton at your next, at the City Commission, uh, meeting for review and, and hopeful approval. But that is the plan of action, um, and obviously, we, we hope that we can find someone who, uh, who was as dynamic and, uh, as Mr. Corton was.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel?
We also have Steve Josephson, who's been filling in part-time city, county. How, how do you expect to utilize his services?
Well, obviously, Steve is our remaining planner.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's got broad shoulders. So we will obviously use him. I, I don't anticipate changing the time commitment that we currently provide to the county. I think we have a contractual arrangement that, that does allow some flexibility, um, but we'd like to continue to provide those services as best we can. I do have some thoughts in mind after a discussion today with one of the, the proposed consulting firms. Uh, I want to, uh, look into that a little bit more, uh, but I think you'll see more of, of Mr. Josephson at these meetings and at planning and zoning, uh, at least for the interim.
Other comments, questions? All right. Well, then we'll go back to the timetable agenda, and, uh, we have a homeless shelter update, and Mr. Corton's gonna make some introductory remarks on, on that issue.
Mr. President, Commissioner, uh, tonight we have Bill Kelly, the Executive Director of the Dixon Churches for the Homeless, uh, here to give us an update, uh, of their operation and to address a couple of issues as part of their operation. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Bill. Thank you.
Mr. President, fellow commissioners, city officials, um, so far this year, first I'd like to say that, uh, I've enjoyed working with the Ed for the last three years, um, as we've got this on board, and, uh, if it wasn't for, for you, then we probably wouldn't be where we're at today with this, so we, I thank you for that. This year so far, we've had, uh, 52 beds occupied in our shelter. We've had, uh, 16 people that didn't show, that were registered to show up, and, uh, those were all spread over about 17 different guests that we've had, so, uh, even though our guest per night is down, it's a little less than two per night on the average. Last year for November, we were three. We are implementing our 15-day rule this year so that, um, so that the stays are shorter. Um, we've had one guest that was there 10 days, and one, there were nine, and they both found apartments, and they're, and they're off doing what we intend to do with our program. We have, uh, uh, I don't want to say a rule. We made a ruling last year, um, the board did, to allow guests under very strict and cer- certain circumstances to drive to the shelter. For the most part, we've, uh, we've utilized Uptown. A couple of weeks ago, we utilized E-Cab to transport our guests. These, these four guests, we've had two this year that, that, um, worked by that method. Uh, the first one worked at Walmart. He worked till midnight. Uh, I talked to his supervisor, validated that it, it wasn't a sham scam type of thing, and, uh, he was there 10 days, found an apartment, moved on, you know, and if we, wouldn't have allowed him that, he may or may not have succeeded. We like to count that as one of our successes. Uh, the other one was a construction guy, and he had to be to work by 6:15. Uh, we've had, uh, a lot of problems with our cab, and I'll get to that in just a minute, but, uh, so we allowed him to drive to the shelter. He was there, I think, nine days, and then he got an apartment, um, and he's off doing the work too, and he had all his construction gear in the back of his pickup, so he didn't really want to leave it down for Methodist Church as our pickup point. We've had two major problems this year, I would call them. We've had, I, I deal with minor problems on a daily basis, and I'm not gonna bore you with all those details, but, um, the biggest problem we had is I had an idea last summer, sometime to go with a breathalyzer, because we had a tough time teaching volunteers how to determine if somebody's been drinking or not drinking, so, um, the chief, Dustin, so kindly loaned us one for the first, uh, couple of weeks. Unfortunately, that didn't really work. It was an old one that they had had, and, uh, whether it's our fault or not, it doesn't matter, it didn't work, and so I've worked with Dustin for the last couple of months, and we've got one ordered, actually showed up today. So we've resolved that problem as far as, probably tomorrow, we'll be starting to use that again. We haven't had any complaints or anything to do with drinking or anything, but we just wanted to make sure volunteers, it's, it's just fair game, you know, that they know they have to come and blow in a breathalyzer, and it's a simple-to-use one. It's red or green, you know, red, you're out, green, you're in, type of thing, so. Uh, that was the first problem, and I, I believe that's our resolution to it, is we've got that one fixed. The second one was a busing problem, uh, last year. E-Cab so kindly donated their services when most of our, um, bus drivers were very tired. We were down to very few bus drivers. They were having to drive a couple, three times a week, and, uh, so they stepped in. They did a great job for us last year. Well, unfortunately, they've gotten busier, they've gotten bigger, and us being a free service to them was a pretty low priority on their list, and we had our guests either waiting for an hour or not get picked up at all, or just showing up at the shelter because nobody went and picked them up. We've resolved that problem now. We had a special session of our board about two weeks ago. Uh, they voted to let us buy a van. Uh, in the process of buying the van, someone so kindly gave us one. So, and I started driving. I, I actually drove last night. It was the first night we've used it, uh, so I really feel that we've kind of got by that hurdle of having to rely on someone else, and, uh, even though they did a great job for us for the most part, um, it's nice to have the control back in our, our court. As I was looking at our application that I gave to Mr. Corton, I believe in September, it didn't really clearly state, I didn't do a very good job of clearly stating that we have, uh, an occasion that someone would drive to the shelter, so I, you know, I'm really looking for guidance among, amongst you gentlemen to, to, you know, see if that's okay on our, our current permit is to allow, under very, very special circumstances, we've only done it four times in two years, um, to allow someone to drive instead of having to sleep on the street just because they worked, you know, till midnight, or, you know, if they work till 2:00 in the morning, they don't get to do it, because this just happened to be our first guest, the first one, and there was no one there to wake up at midnight anyway, so it wasn't a, it wasn't a deterrent to the other guests, but, um, with that, I'd go to any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Does anyone have comments or questions?
You've had 52, 52 beds used, so 52-person nights is.
Yep, exactly.
What you're saying.
Yep.
And it sounds like about 20 of them have been these two individuals that you just talked about.
Yep, I would say that's pretty close to that.
Just trying to get a sense for.
We have some people that never show up. They go through the whole registration process, and they don't even show up once. We have some people that show up once, and, um, they maybe only needed one night, maybe they go back to where they, you know, where they, where they were, came from in the first place, or they, you know, there's, there's lots of reasons, but.
Yeah, and as far as the driving thing, I don't know how everybody else feels, but to me, that's a detail that if, if you guys think that's workable and, and you're able to manage it, I, I'd say that's up to you.
Okay. We're really tight on it. I mean, it isn't a very loose rule, because it's, it, it's hard on our volunteers, and it's hard on, you know, I mean, that, that week, this guy was the only one there for the first probably five, six days, and so they, the volunteers that normally came in at a quarter to nine didn't come in till a quarter to 12, so, you know, it made it a little tougher, but, you know, sometimes you just do it, so.
Mr. Kelly, you mentioned that it's happened four, the driving directly to the shelters happened four times in, in two years. happened four times in, in two years. Do you mean four people, or it's actually only occurred four times?
No, there's been four people that have been authorized. I, I shouldn't say that it's never happened. Every once in a while, someone will be unbeknownst to the rules and show up at the shelter. Well, you know, they get a lecture from me, and like they're one of my children, but they get a lecture, and we've never had it happen twice. So even if they didn't understand that, if, you know, one of our agencies didn't explain it correctly when they processed, and they just showed up at the, at the church, you know, we don't want to put them out necessarily unless they blatantly break the rules. But, you know, I like to give someone grace the first time, and then, now, if they show up tomorrow night and they drive to the shelter again, they can't come in. But we have never had it happen twice to the same person.
Have you had any of your adjacent residents, you know, your neighbors, express concern about that issue specifically?
No, I've never, I mean, until this one call that Mr. Cortan got last, was it last week? I'd never, never heard anything about that. I mean, I struggle with day-to-day operations of it, and I, I didn't even realize that most people would have known what I have to go through, but...
Okay, thank you.
The only concern I would have, and I'm, I'm not against or, or for, you know, either way, but the concern I would have if, if someone drives there, and I don't know if you guys take the keys at that time and give it to them in the morning, but if they want to leave in the middle of the night, and someone wants to leave with them that received the ride from you guys there, is there any liability there, or is...
I don't believe we have a liability, because we're not, you know, they can leave it, they can leave walking in the middle of the night. But our only rule with leaving is you can't come back. So if they decide that, you know, because there's some people occasionally that'll work at 5:00 in the morning, and they, we had the one last year, would, he would leave, he would wake himself up, because I told him that our volunteers aren't responsible for getting you up early for your job, and he would wake himself up at 4:00 and grab something to eat, and he'd be out of there and be to work at 5:00, you know? We haven't had any kind of, you know, those kinds of problems or anything like that, because that, once they leave, then they're on their own. I mean, that's, we're not a jail-type of a facility, so, I mean, they can come and go as they please, they just can't come and come, they can't come twice, or they can't come back.
Doesn't sound like it'd be much of, too big of a problem. I mean, if you get 10 a night, you might have someone complain about the parking.
Right. Well, and it's, but it's in every one of the churches, and most of the churches have their own private parking lots. I mean, I don't know if we, I, I don't think it's gonna get to that point ever. I mean, it'd be pretty rare that we'd have, you know, we could only handle 15 people, and if, you know, 10 or 15 of them were, I don't, it's only happened four times in two years with, you know, 80, 90 people we've had, so, in that time.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. President, as part of the permit, it was, it was very specific, and the reason for that, so that we knew exactly what would be going on. I asked Mr. Kelly tonight if there was anything that, any amendments to that, and the only one that you're proposing tonight with respect to your operation would be to allow on occasion their board to make a decision to allow somebody to drive to the facility at their discretion, which I see is, has been very good over the years. I think you would need to make some kind of, you, you would have to acknowledge that amendment, or we would have to go through a, an amendment with the permit. I'll ask Mr. Coling if that's the sufficient way to do that, or just a verbal tonight of your acceptance of that, so they could do that in the future on occasion.
The guests that drive are guests that have gone through the registration process.
Oh, absolutely.
If someone just drives over there...
They will not be allowed in the shelter.
But if they've gone through the registration process.
Exactly.
Okay.
And it's a pre-approved process. We actually have a, a form in the intake process. That's why I said it was, we didn't really specify, it's my own fault, I didn't put it in the, in the verbiage to Mr. Cortan, but, you know, one of the forms in the intake process is a late arrival form that they fill out, have their, have their supervisor sign off on, and, and I call and validate those things. So it was, it was halfway there, just not very, it wasn't well spoken, so...
Well, is there any objection to someone driving to the shelter if they have pre-approval of the, of either Mr. Kelly or his board?
No.
I have no objection.
So if there's no objection to that, then, Mr. Coling, if something formally needs to be done, would it be most proper to do that at the December 15th meeting?
Mr. President, and Commissioners, the resolution that created this special use permit or temporary shelter permit, I believe was provided in, at your table tonight. One of the conditions of that resolution is that the temporary homeless shelter would be in conformance at all times with the submitted application materials. And I believe what we would need to do in order to effectuate this, this change is simply have Mr. Kelly submit the, the guidelines that would govern a individual driving directly to the facility, and we can include that with the, the case file or the project file that we have for this temporary shelter permit. And that would be sufficient for our purposes in order to allow that.
Okay. So you have your direction there on what you need to do.
Perfect. Okay.
Anything else?
Just thank you again for everything that you're doing, especially during this November, as cold as it's been. It's nice to have you as a resource.
Thank you. I appreciate all the help from all the city officials on both sides and, and the commission as well. Thanks.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this issue? If so, you can come to the podium now, state your name, and we'll hear your comments also. All right, there's no one from the public. I think, unless I've missed anything, I think we're down to comments by Commissioners? Not, if there's nothing by Commissioners? Are there any issues from the public that any member would like to bring to our attention? If so, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public, so the Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
President Johnson, before you...
Did I miss something?
No, you didn't. I just want to, I made an allusion to a right-of-way process that is why we requested the December 30th, but I didn't really explain that. And we're gonna be sending out offer letters. The, the appraisals have come back for several of the properties, and so offer letters will go out this week to those landowners. You may get phone calls as a City Commission based upon those offer letters to those landowners. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that they were going out. We, we think they're, they're obviously reflect the appraisal that we receive, or that we received, so we think they're fair, but you never know how they'll be received by the property owners themselves.
All right, anything else? Okay, now the Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, the motion carries or adjourned.